Good evening, I want to welcome you and call order this meeting of the Florisville ISD Board of Trustees for this date, August the 5th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. Let the record show that there is a forum of board members present, myself, Joel Odom, Mrs. Lyanna Martinez, Mr. Steven Schabrock, Ms. Bama Reid, Mr. Marshall Pleer, and Mr. Craig Moose. Furthermore, let the record show that this meeting has been duly posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Mrs. Martinez will now lead us in prayer, if you'll stand with me, followed by myself, I will lead the pledges.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your blessing, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting, as our teachers return today to prepare for the new school year. Guide them with your strength and dedication, help them create a nurturing and inspiring environment for our students who will be joining us next week. We also ask for your blessings on all our school employees working diligently to get our schools ready for our students. Grant us the insight and understanding needed to make the best decisions for the welfare of our students, faculty, and staff, and to strengthen the bonds with our community. May we invest ourselves fully in your work and remember that it is you who works through us. In your name we pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to me, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Mr. Pleer will now recite our FISD vision and mission statement.
The FISD vision statement is character, knowledge, competence. Our mission statement is FISD is committed to the development of innovative lifelong learners who possess character traits to achieve personal and professional success.
Mr. Moose will now recite our FISD goals.
The FISD goals are excellent student outcomes, superior workplace environment, exceptional customer service, and community engagement, strategic resource management.
We will now recite our FISD core beliefs. In FISD, we believe all students feel safe and supported in the developmentally and academically challenging environment.
Families are welcome partners in their children's education.
Faculty and staff are compassionate, dedicated, and applicable individuals who are student-centered.
Campus leadership is fair, equitable, and thoroughly communicates and engages with stakeholders.
Superintendent and general central administration leads with integrity, transparency, and clear communication to provide a well-resourced educational environment.
The trustees provide a student-centered and fiscally responsible leadership and transparent and ethical support of all stakeholders.
Mrs. Martinez will now recite our overview of good governance and code of ethics.
Each month we highlight one of our good governance indicators and code of ethics that the FISD Board of Trustees fall to promote the best interests of the district as a whole. This month for the code of ethics, we are highlighting equity and attitude. I will be fair, just, and impartial in all my decisions and actions. I will accord others the respect I wish for myself. I will encourage expressions of different opinions and listen with an open mind to others' ideas. Our good governance indicator for this month is the board and superintendent team regularly checks expectations and assesses board superintendent-manager operations.
Good thinking, Mrs. Martinez. Now we'll have the Capturing Kids Hearts National Showcase School recognition for Florisville North, Florisville South, and Florisville Middle School. Dr. Gilstrap?
Board members, I'm going to step down here so that we can recognize some of our principals and our campuses. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, no, no. I'm sorry. She's on her spot. First time. So I want to recognize for our Capturing Kids Hearts National Showcase Schools, Florisville North for the third year in a row, is that correct? Third year in a row. And this year, joined by North Elementary, is South Elementary and Florisville Middle School. So some people always ask, what is Capturing Kids Hearts and what does it mean? So through exceptional training, expert coaching, and character-based curriculum for students, the personalized support of Capturing Kids Hearts equips K-12 education professionals to implement a transformational process focused on fostering student connections, which is what we're about, and building growing relationships among the culture of the campus. The Capturing Kids Hearts Showcase Schools award is for both the high aspirations and high exemplary recognitions of excellence. Capturing Kids Hearts is proud to recognize the outstanding educators who have dedicated to themselves to making a difference in students' lives. Recognizing and celebrating schools produces exemplary outstanding outcomes under the Capturing Kids Hearts process. High levels of proficiency, performance, and positive culture and climate is what leads to this recognition. Just so you know, three of our campuses have been recognized this evening. For 2023-24, the Capturing Kids Hearts National Showcase awarded to only 612 schools across the nation. So we have three of those in our midst today. So I want to say congratulations to y'all. We do have a certificate, and, Mr. President, I would like to ask that we take a brief recess and go take some pictures out in the hallway with their banners.
All right, very good. Yes, we will. Take a brief recess. Congratulations. Middle schools, I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir.
And their staff. If y'all don't mind, board members, we can go outside in the hallway right around the corner to the left. We'll take a quick picture.
in their foyer or in their cafeteria, common space, where others and families and students can be recognized for their accomplishment. It really is not just the administrators that are a big part of that, it's also the students, the teachers, that make it happen on a daily basis. So thank you administrators for taking the lead on that and for being the example for others, and thank your staff and your students as well. They do an outstanding job.
All right, thank you, Dr. Gilstrap, and thank you administration. Ms. Petrie, do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay, or none. If you would like to stay, you're welcome to stay. If not, you can go. We've got some exciting reports to report to you. I know it will keep your attention through the whole meeting, I promise you. Maybe. So we'll continue now with our reports and updates. Dr. Gilstrap will now give the superintendent.
Yes, board members, the first day of school is quickly approaching. Just a reminder, we have school starting a week from Wednesday. First day of school is the 14th. Final projects are being completed, and our facilities are ready to go. We still button up a couple of things, but we are ready to go. Staff is receiving some valuable professional development to utilize during this school year. We look forward to the students returning next Wednesday. We want to remind our community that all of our school zones and our bus loading zones will be active during that time, so please make arrangements, be careful, take your time. And also to all of our families and our community, bring your patience the first few days as families and students and staff really try to get things ironed out as far as beginning of school, end of day routines. I know a lot of people want to take their students to school on the first few days and then go pick them up on the first few days, and so that really causes a lot of congestion. So please bring your patience and work with us and be mindful of all those school zones as well. I've talked a little bit about a K-9 officer that we've been actively pursuing, and we are getting closer to that. The company that we are using actually put out a solicitation through social media, and we did contact them, and they have been removed that. We will be utilizing grant funds to pay for that K-9 officer. And so we're in the process of finalizing that so we can get that officer onboard. If you did not notice, this evening out here in the back, we have the new police car that was donated to us from the Florisville City and Florisville Police Department. It is equipped with a K-9 cage. That's a huge blessing for us. If we were going to have to go out and get a K-9 unit and try to get that type of vehicle which is required, it would be a hefty price tag. So thank you to Florisville, City of Florisville for donation of that. As of Friday, August the 2nd, so last Friday, our enrollment was over 4,000 students. This number will continue to fluctuate, so please, that's why I didn't include any numbers in the update today, specifics, because we're going to continue to have students enroll. But also don't forget, we're going to have no-shows. So that first day, we have kids in our count right now. That first day, they're not going to show up, they're going to find out that they moved to another district or another school, and we'll get notification at that time, and that's when we will deactivate those students. So we don't know what that's going to lead to, what that final number is going to be. What I will say, we are ahead of where we were last year at this time. So I feel confident in that our enrollment will be above where it was last year when we started school. So that's a good thing. As we move forward this fall, we are going to continue our long-range facility planning. It's very important that the board have a thorough understanding and knowledge of our district facilities. So we're going to have a board facility workshop, please mark the calendars, Monday, August the 19th at 6 o'clock. During the workshop, we will conduct walkthroughs at each campus and facility as a group, as a group as a board. This will allow us to have a common understanding of where we are in the master facility planning as we move forward. It will be a lengthy meeting, so please make arrangements for a little longer meeting. We'll provide transportation to all those different campuses. We'll also have a policy committee meeting prior to that on Monday, the 19th at 5:30. So if you're on the policy committee, please make arrangements. We'll review update 123 and get that ready for the September board meeting consideration. Also included in the superintendent report is the athletic handbooks for students and for the athletic staff. This is not for the board's approval, but it is for the board's review. I mainly want to make sure that you know that we do have that. It is in play, and it's also been addressed with all of the participants as well as the parents. And it will be posted on our website along with other handbooks. So I just want to make sure that you know we do have that in place, and it's also been signed off on by our participants. The Back to School Bash will be this Wednesday, starting at 6 o'clock, followed by Community Pep Rally at 7:00. We'll have some activity booths, and the board will have a booth. So if you're going to be able to attend, please let myself or Ms. Petrie know so that we can kind of get a rotation. We want to allow you as board members to have a chance to go and look and visit all the booths as well, not just stay at ours. It's a great opportunity to mingle with the community and also our students and families whenever they're there, really getting ready for the new year to start. It's an exciting day, it's an exciting time, we want to make sure we celebrate it. The district convocation is going to be Friday, August the 9th at 8:30 at the Event Center. Doors will open for breakfast to be served at 7:30. And we'll also have vendors there this year. We're not going to have a guest feature like we've had the past couple of years, so we're going to have our local vendors. I think we're up to, Ms. Thomas, what is it, 50?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two. We're up to 52 local vendors, and we're actually having to start putting them on waitlist because we've got so many that we're trying to make sure we have room for everybody. Because whenever we have 52 vendors and 600 employees that are trying to mingle with them, space becomes an issue. So, but that will be Friday, August the 9th, so next Friday, excuse me, this Friday, if you're going to be able to be there, please let myself or Ms. Petrie know. We will have the band, the cheerleaders, as well as all of our district staff there to celebrate the beginning of the year. Also, we have our Education Foundation Gala, it's the Gold Buckle Gala this year, that is our theme. That's going to be Saturday, September the 28th. If you would like to have tickets to that, please let me know, or if you know a member of the Education Foundation Board, you can contact them for tickets as well. The TASCASB convention is at the end of September, the 27th and 28th, in San Antonio. That conference is typically held in Dallas, and so it's nice that it's going to be in San Antonio. It is a combination between the Texas Association of Administrators and also the Texas Association of School Boards. It's a joint conference. So it's really a good one to try to go to. If you're interested in going, please let us know. Again, there's several breakout sessions and general sessions that you can go to for that. And it is, I believe, the primary days are Friday, Saturday, I think it's a happy day on Thursday, so if you're interested, please let us know. Also included in the board packet or in the superintendent report is an update on our contract hiring, so this will be the last month that I'll be able to offer those contracts. We'll have those up for your approval starting in September. And then we also finally have a list of other activities that are coming up, just as a reminder. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Gilstrap. Our next report is the 23-24 State Academic Assessment Report by Mrs. Jones.
It's been a minute since I've had a presentation or so. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Gilstrap, President Odom, and that's it. I think I messed it up, I'm sorry. My name is Brenda Jones, and I am our federal programs and our assessment coordinator for the district. Today, I'm going to be sharing some student performance data and student growth for grade levels 3 through 8 and STAR EOC. Please note, I put a little asterisk at the bottom. RLA stands for reading language arts, and EOC is end of course. Our first section, I'm going to go over grades 3 through 8, RLA, math, science, and social So for RLA, our spring 2024 STAR grade levels. I want to mention that this does not include Spanish assessments, and it does not include our Florisville Alternative Center. So out of 19 performance levels, the performance levels are the approaches, meets, and masters. Out of 19 of those, 10 went up, four stayed the same, so about four went down. At the meets level, all went up except 5th and 6th grade, they stayed the same. The thing is, for approaches, that's the state's passing standard, so the great thing at the meets level that they all went up is that's where we want all our kiddos to be, so they're growing there. Now, this is our math spring data for grades 3 through 8. Again, it's English only, does not include Florisville Alternative Center. 3rd grade meets, there was no change. 8th grade approaches and masters grade level, performance levels, they did increase. I want to mention that 7th grade, okay, so this year, our students are kind of on an accelerated path at the middle school level, our 7th graders that were going into 8th grade. Normally, 7th graders in math would take 7th grade honors. That course actually was teaching the 7th grade standards and 8th grade standards. So those students that were in 7th grade honors actually took the 8th grade STAR test. Hope you're following me. So meaning that those students that would normally in 7th grade get meets and masters grade level, they were now with our 8th grade group of students, those scores. So the hope is that eventually, so this school year, I believe we're starting now with 6th grade, so our 6th graders will be learning the 6th grade standards as well as 7th grade standards. So by the time they get to 7th grade, they're not going to necessarily be overloaded with all 7th grade standards. So we're hoping the potential is that they'll level out and show an increase in performance level in the next few years.
Is there a trend, I mean, other than in the 8th grade, they're all negative except for 3rd grade meets?
Yes, and there is. And from what I could say is RLA is a lot stronger, but because we've had our blended learning initiative taking place, and now we are trying to trickle that into math. At the end of this presentation, I am going to explain to you some of the things that we're going to do at the district level and what each campus plans to do for math. Science and social, okay. In science, let's see, 8th grade, same thing, test administration to test administration. This is not our accountability subset of students. This is all our students. So if a student came in in May or April, let's say April, because we took tests in April, they're included in this data, but they may have come from another school district. So our 8th grade science approaches went up, and social studies meets also increased. We had been struggling in social studies, so that was actually a good thing for our 8th graders. Okay, now this is our cohort data for reading language arts, grades 3 through 8. If you're looking at the top one, so what you're going to see is from 23 to 24, 3rd grade cohort has gone up by 9% in the one-year change. So from last year to this year, our 3rd graders in 2023 that were in 4th grade this past school year, they went up by 9%. Our 4th graders were at 75%, they went down, however, it's still higher than where we were two years ago. And then our 6th grade, 5th grade cohort, no, yeah, well, it's our, it's our 5th grade cohort, but they are now in 7th grade. So our 5th graders started off in 2022 at 77, they went up to 78, and then they actually hit 80. So they've been going up from year to year. Our 6th grade cohort, or 8th graders now, but when they were in 6th grade, 69, 75, 82, they also went up. Let me see if I've got my arrows. I do. So you can see that. So from 22 to 23 to 24, the two-year change was a negative 2, however, for 4th grade, the two-year change were still up by 1%. 5th grade were up by 3% from two years ago. And then these kiddos that were in 6th grade that were just our past 8th graders are up 13% in reading language arts. And then our 7th graders that took it in, they're high school now, but that took, that were in 8th grade, whoa, I just have the data there. How do they think about it? They would have been freshmen this year, but they were going up. Okay, now at the meets grade level, now this is exciting. To me, it's exciting, I love data. Meets went up across the board. All our cohorts are growing. So from 3rd grade 2022, it did go down by 1% to 41% last school in 23, but this past school year, we brought it back up, the meets grade level. So our 5th graders, they're progressing, they're going up, they're growing where we want them to go. 4th grade, same thing, 49, 50, 52. So the last two years, they're going up, that's where we want them to be. 5th grade, 5th graders in 2022, they were 6th grade last year, they went down to 52, but then this year caught them back up in 7th grade. And let's see, our 6th graders who were 8th graders this past year, in 6th grade, they got 44, 49, and then this past year, they were at 58% in reading language arts. So they increased 14% over the last two years. So what does this tell us as we're kind of looking at it, and you look at the approaches, but you do see meets is great, but their approaches grade level is still kind of showing a little bit. It's just, we need to dive really into the data, see where the struggles are going, come up with a plan of action, and implement those strategies in the classrooms, teach teachers some strategies so that can be implemented in the classroom to get those kiddos, that 5th grade cohort, to increase their growth. Math, this is math approaches grade level. So two-year cohort change, 5th, 6th, and 8th grade improved, so they made growth. The one-year cohort change in the approaches grade level, 4th and 8th grade improved. So we'll see right here, 3rd grade, two-year change went to 4, but they did decrease from last year. 4th grade, they went from 63 to 80. In 6th grade, there is a change, and it's still above what we were two years, what they were in 4th grade, however, from year to year, 5th grade to 6th grade. I was doing, I was trying to do some research on math as far as, is there a big change from standards or the rigor of learning from 5th grade to 6th grade? Because if you think about it, that could be a jump. 5th grade in 22, 76, 45. So this is our current 7th graders. 6th grade, our current 8th grade, our previous 8th graders this past school year, they did pretty good, they went up 12, but thinking about, some 7th graders also took that 8th grade STAR test. So there could be a correlation. And the meets grade level, 3rd grade in 22, their 5th graders this past year, we went up in 23 by 10%. So, I mean, we started at 28, so we're still at 10% above. 31% to 44. So our 6th graders in the meets grade level, you know, took a hit as well. 5th grade, our current 7th graders, this is the meets grade level, went down some. 6th grade, our current 8th graders, they went up from two years ago, however, they did do a slight decrease from last year to this year. Now, we're going, this next slide is going to compare, I'm not too sure what's going on. Our RLA grades 3 through 8 approaches grade level, this is a district and state comparison. I'll give y'all a moment just to kind of take a look.
Do you think the way they're presenting the test the new way, this is, that doesn't help the increase? I know there used to be computers, but the...
Right, and then the way the questions were asked, well, our STAR redesign took place two years ago, I think. I mean, it's possible. The reality is, I think, you know, at the end of the day, each campus is going to dive into their data to understand why their students struggled and where they struggled. And the goal is, once we identify that, okay, what do we need to do for our teachers now to make sure that they're teaching the students that they need to learn? And it could be that that changed, some students struggle with answering those type of questions as opposed to multiple choice, where it's easier to sometimes guess.
Some of multiple choice could have been one or all. You know, that would throw me for a loop.
That's, you're absolutely right. And I had that test today, today, my technology test was asking me click, and I didn't read the question correctly, and I got it wrong.
I mean, other than math, I mean, the scores are going up, if you look at this, you compare the state to us. You know, definitely you get to 7th and 8th grade, we're over the state average, which is great, but that math is the one that's consistently kind of odd.
And it is, it really is.
Yeah, I mean, so it just, yeah, I mean, why they don't grasp that versus other stuff they do well.
Right. I think we all felt the same way too when we saw it, and it was kind of like, okay, what's going on and why?
Cell phone is what you got to do.
That would help us out, but yes, absolutely. I mean, if you do look at it, we are still close to the state, we're making some gains. So this is math, look, 8th grade is 10% above the state. However, our other grade levels, 6th grade is only 1% below. 4th grade, same thing, just what, 7%? So we know, I mean...
State is low in 7th grade as well.
Uh-huh.
Drop off.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
It makes you wonder, can they just slow her to catch on earlier, but once they get to middle school?
Well, I know, one of the, one of the things that the state is really, I don't want to say pushing, but more students taking algebra 1 in the 8th grade. That's one of their objectives from DEA. And so that's what leads us to, okay, we still have to cover 6th and 7th grade TEES, but now we're going to have to cover them early, because you still need to cover the 8th grade TEES before they take...
The 8th grade STAR.
...one now. And so that's why it's kind of getting compressed, but I know across the state, 7th grade was behind this year.
And 8th grade is, so same thing with our middle school algebra students. Last year, we were at 100%, this year it shows we're at 90-something, and I couldn't figure it out. I'm like, wait, I don't understand how one of our algebra kiddos didn't pass. Well, it turns out that student was new, came from another school district, who probably took algebra. Well, it turns out that student was new, came from another school district who probably took algebra in the other school district, so that's why we had to put them in algebra, but they weren't ready for it. Um, and so it kind of lowered, but it was just me wanting to, being curious as to what happened. Uh, science and social studies, fifth grade just a little bit below the state, eighth grade in science were above. Social studies were even, so that tells you the eighth grade social studies is a struggle all around. Okay, now moving on to our EOC. So our end of course results. This is test administration to test administration, meaning we just, whatever the, the, the early results filed that we get from the state or the preliminary, that's the data that we use, preliminary to preliminary, all students. Does not include Florisville Alternative Center, and we combine December, because we're five by five and we have, have our students take tests in December, it, they're combined, the results are combined. So it's a lot of manual kind of labor, but, um, four out of five went up in the meats level. Middle school and high school, um, that asterisk, the algebra, that's combined. This also includes our retesters.
Do you see anything five by five in kids taking it in the fall versus in the spring?
Like a, a difference?
Difference in between?
You know, that's a good question. Um, I, I didn't really look at that, but, um, I can tell you, it's, it's, the five by five is difficult when you're testing half your students in the fall and half, and, and, uh, half in the spring. Um, right now, too, our kiddos in the fall, they're going to do their interim at late October. Kind of, and that interim is kind of like a predictor of how our kids are going to do on the STAR, however, they're rushed through those standards, so they probably haven't even maybe made it through half, so that's not going to be true data for us. Um, and then November, we have Thanksgiving, they're off, and then they come back, we come back, I think, for maybe a, oh, no, the fall, that next weekend, that first week of December, we're testing them.
Yeah, there would seem like there'd be more distractions in the fall semester than there would be in the spring semester.
So, I mean, and I can tell you that, and just me as a testing coordinator and having to compile the data, the truth is, there's room for error, because the state does not report out on, um, in December, they're assuming they're all retesters, so I don't get all that data. I have to do, I have to really dive in and look at, pull the state's reports and look at exact numbers of their December testers and retesters to add in to their, we're, we're going to see that in just a minute, the state test, but, or state compared to us. Um, it just, it can be a little cumbersome. Um, let's see, EOC, so this is versus state. Biology, we're, we're even, and US history, we're above. And that's the same thing, algebra is including our eighth graders who took algebra, and, um, again, our, our retesters are in the state as well. So now we, now I split it up so you could see without retesters how our students did. And, um, you'll see, and this is also the state's first time tested as well. So this is our first time testers only. Uh, we were at seventy-eight percent in English one for first time testers, and the state was at seventy-five, so we were above there. English two, just a little, a little below the state. Algebra one, same thing, our first time testers were at actually eighty percent. Um, biology ninety-four, and US history ninety-seven.
Can you briefly just, the difference between first time tester and a retester?
Oh, okay, um, so our first time testers have never taken that end of course test. It would be their very first time to have taken it. So, um, when the state gives us this, all the student data back, it's all our kiddos. Retesters, everything, so we, they actually send a summary report, and I'm able to look at which kiddos were, um, first time testers, never taken a STAR, uh, EOC, meaning they hadn't had the course, or they didn't have, they didn't learn all the standards, all the things they needed to learn for that course, or they didn't take the test, as opposed to students who've taken the test several times and, or one time and not.
But it's strange, the first time, first time do better than the all students. I, that, that's typical, because, I mean, if a student is, doesn't pass the, the algebra one test the first time, then the second time, the third time.
There's, the struggle may be there, yes, to pass again, and so, um, we've removed those retesters in that category that have potential to struggle to pass again. So we've got to work there as well. So our summary and instructional plan of action. So for the district, this is a summary. Um, our areas of strength were grades three through eight, reading growth in meats level, seventh grade reading, English one, and biology. Areas for growth, three through seventh grade math, fifth and eighth grade science, uh, algebra one and English two. And these are some action items. Florisville North is, um, replacing their technology time in stations, so our students will, uh, teachers will, uh, have activities in different stations for the students to rotate through, to go, to go through. They're going to replace that with more hands-on, teacher-directed instruction. They're going to start monitoring or continue and, and improve the monitoring of small group instruction. Um, instructional coach will provide support for our multi-tiered, uh, student support lessons with small group instruction, MTSS. Third grade math administration, administration is pushing in to support our third grade math teachers and having more face-to-face professional development to demonstrate the strategies to those teachers. FSE, um, each administrator is leading a team of math planning. Campus walkthroughs are going to be focused and scheduled. So, um, the, when it, when an administrator goes into a classroom to do a walkthrough to look at teachers or observe teachers, there's going to be a focus, and they're going to now have them scheduled. So it's, it makes it more difficult to not do your walkthrough. Um, repurposed a teacher to provide ESL tier-two support. Math academy training, five teachers have been, uh, sent or trained to the math academies, which is much like the reading academies, but for math. Training on the rigor of essential math standards. So diving more into, uh, the standards, all the standards that our students have to learn. The math grade levels have essential ones that, um, you want to spend more time on and focus that, and so, uh, making sure that teachers understand what the students need to know, understanding what the standard is asking them to know and what our students need to learn. Secondary actions. Uh, Florisville Middle School, evaluate alignment of assessments and instruction to standards. So just looking at the tests that are created and making sure that, um, it aligns and, and the instruction in the classroom, the activities that are going on, that it aligns to what the standard is truly asking the teacher to teach the student, the student to know and learn. Supports for sixth grade transitioning from fifth grade. Beginning, um, MTSS, multi-tiered systems, systems supports at the beginning of the year and focus on differentiation, personalization in lesson design, restructured advanced math pathways. So that's what I kind of talked about earlier as far as now, now it's going to start in sixth grade. This past year, that started in seventh, so moving it down. For Florisville High School, professional development for algebra one. Making an adjust, adjusting the master schedule to support algebra instruction. Evaluate essential standards for English one and English two. Evaluate alignment of assessments to standards, so much like what middle school wants to do as well. Establish a clear coaching cycle for English two. So, um, a coaching cycle, meaning administration or, or the academic dean would be working with the English two teachers and going in and observing and providing them some feedback, maybe do some modeling, um, of, of some strategies in the classroom. Trying to look at my notes, orientation, full setting. And the district's actions in response. So, um, I think it was Dr. Wade had asked for this information from the campuses and also asked, well, you know, what do you, what do you want from, uh, from us at the district level? So provide professional development and coaching in the following areas. Professional learning communities, which twenty-five years of research shows effectiveness for school improvement. Strategies for struggling learners, we've already started that professional development, I believe, this past summer, and there's going to be, um, some offered at the beginning of year, uh, with our, this week. Uh, instructional coaching, developing learning targets for secondary and Florisville ISD in the file. Florisville ISD learning experience and PLC alignment process. So our files are a model of how we teach, and the PLCs are where the professional learning communities, where the teachers go in and work together and collaborate, so making sure that those two are aligned and taking place. Monitor and adjust as necessary implementation of special education support, district-approved instructional strategies, coaching of teachers, professional learning communities, and academic performance. And that is all I have.
So would, would you say, Ms. General, between the pandemic and then the restructuring of the test, we're trying to find the right, the balance in instructional methods? Because you look at some of the scores, and we, it feels like we've done much better if we've come out of the pandemic, had double dips, but is it a combination of some of that or your best?
You know, I, I don't know, I, it, I, I think this year, I think we focused on the blended, um, freezing blended learners, the blended learning classroom, and we focused on RLA, so you can really see how that worked and the tremendous growth there. Math was doing okay, was good, but obviously when you kind of lose some of that focus, which probably happened. Um, and, and it, so there it is in red, and it told us, okay, hello, we need some attention now. Um, and so these are some action items that we're doing, and I do think though, yes, with the pandemic and all that going on, math is a.
Seems to have taken the biggest hit.
Yeah.
Well, I will say this, across the state after the pandemic, math declined, just the skill set. And it's exacerbated, because if the kids were out, and then they come back, there's a whole skill set, and it's much easier to regroup with reading, and our emphasis on reading shows great results. So we just, we've got to buckle down with math now.
And they were not used to turning in their work, like, that was the hardest thing.
And showing the work.
Yes, show.
And next we will have the twenty-four, twenty-five FISD student handbook of Mr. Schroller.
Good evening, Superintendent Schools, Mr. President, Board of Trustees. This district handbook was viewed by our campus and district leaders over the summer. It was a collaborative effort. The handbook helps communicate essential information to students and parents for the current school year. It helps to facilitate a general understanding of the law and other regulatory matters. In board book, I have shared a list of the changes for you to view. I'd like to highlight very quickly a few changes TASVE has made. The first change is in regards to consent to video or audio record a student when not already permitted by law. TASVE modified that text to read, state law permits the school to make a video or voice recording without parental permission when the recording is to be used for, one, school safety, two, media coverage of the school, and three, promotion of student safety. The second change pertains, pertains to the Texas Driving with Disability Program. In accordance with state law, the district shall provide, shall provide notification of the Texas Driving with Disability Program to students who have a health condition or disability that may impede effective communication with the peace officer and receive special education or are covered by Section 504, such as a speech impediment. Three, uh, pertains to the duty to report. TASVE added new text that states anyone who suspects that a child has been or may be abused or neglected has a legal responsibility under state law to report the suspected abuse or neglect to law enforcement or to CPS immediately. The fourth change pertains to, including in the handbook, the possible warning signs of physical abuse, sexual abuse, emotional abuse, neglect, along with the definition and warning signs of trafficking. The fifth change pertains to pregnancy or related conditions. TASVE added new language stating, the district shall not discriminate against any student or exclude any student from its education program or activity, including any class or extracurricular activity on the basis of student's pregnancy, childbirth, false pregnancy, termination of pregnancy, or recovery. The sixth change pertains to safe use of technology. TASVE added new language stating, in accordance with state and federal law, TASVE states, the district will install a filter that blocks and prohibits pornographic or obscene materials or applications, including unsolicited pop-ups. Two, require direct and informed parental consent for a student's use of software, other than software excluded from the consent requirement by law. And last, require direct and informed parental consent for a student's use of software that conducts mental health assessments or un, or other assessments unrelated to education curricula that are intended to collect inform, information about students. Uh, please know, FISD is in compliance with these state and federal laws pertaining to the safe use of technology. In addition, the district added a general description to the random student drug testing guidelines in the handbook, along with a hyperlink, uh, for parents and students to view more information should they choose. The final change pertained to new text regarding student seizures. The new text reads, a parent who submits a plan must use the Caesar Management and Treatment Plan form that was developed by the Texas Education Agency. Again, board, this handbook is updated before each school year by TASVE, legal and policy experts to help districts such as FISD stay current with changes in state and federal law guidelines from state and federal agencies. Are there any questions?
Not as many changes this year, it's not a legislative year.
That's correct.
Next year, we'll probably expect a few more changes.
Absolutely.
Again, this is for a report, it's not for board approvals.
Correct, yes, sir. Thank you, board.
All right. Mr. Scholl. Thank you, Ms. Scholl. Our last report, we will have the twenty-four, twenty-five FISD employee handbook of Mrs. Stoll.
Good evening, Dr. Gilstrap, Dr. Odom, Board of Trustees. So similarly to the, um, what Mr. Schroller presented for the student handbook, I'm presenting the changes and the updates that were recommended by TASV for the employee handbook. And they are even fewer than the student handbook. Like Dr. Gilstrap said, because we're not in a legislative session, there's very few changes to the employee handbook. We added, well, TASVE added nicotine to the use of prohibited products. And we added more information to, when we talk about the five of eight rule, to better support teachers, teacher growth and gather performance data. Experienced teachers, counselors, or nurses, new to Florisville ISD that have been employed for, in public education for at least five of the previous eight years, will be issued a probationary contract each year for the first two years. This provides clarification on our DOI exemption, which would normally be one, just the first year of that, if a teacher has five years of experience in the past eight years. So that's been our longstanding rule in our, with a DOI exemption, we just provided clarification in the employee handbook. We also added a statement regarding employers, employees' responsibility to review the accuracy of their pay state, pay statements, um, each month. And added an explanation of overpayments and the repayment process. We updated the employee dress code to include daily wear of jeans, but professional in appearance. The other policy changes were to add nicotine to the table of contents, and changes in the policy codes, like changing policy CSC to CKA per the policy update one-twenty-two, and also updated the policy code in the asbestos management plan. And all of these changes, we always discuss with the employees at the beginning of the year. We go over them with new teachers and the existing teachers. And the, really, the main thing, two things that we're pointing out to employees this year is that they are responsible for reviewing their paychecks each month and reviewing them for accuracy and making sure that we know about any inaccuracies as soon as possible. And of course, the jeans, um, rule that whenever we told the new teachers, um, on Tuesday, I think it brought tears to some of them, their eyes, because they were. it brought tears to some of their eyes because they were so, so delighted with that change to the employee dress code.
What's been the response, principals?
I mean, they, I think they thought I was joking. They're like, really, really? It's a professional. Tell me what's professional. I said, give examples. What's professional? What's not professional? So that will, of course, be closely monitored by their supervisors. Are there any questions to the changes and additions to the employee handbook? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Stausch, thank you. Next on the agenda is item number five, action items. First action item is the consent agenda.
Board members included in the consent agenda are the typical minutes, bank statements, financial reports. We do also have a donation from the Athletic Booster Club in the amount of $21,500. That'll be dispersed to our different athletic teams. And so kudos to the Athletic Booster Club for their donation. Also, the Region 20 commitments, this is an annual service. Region 20 provides multiple services for us and a discounted cost because we work with amongst all the other school districts in the area. Our agreement with them is for $87,205.14, but it is, it provides a great service for the district and much cheaper than we could go out and get those services away from Region 20. Also, we have our adjunct faculty agreement with the Wilson County 4H and the Ag Extension Office. And so that allows our students that are in 4H to participate in events outside of school and be counted present as extracurricular absences. If they were not, if we did not have this agreement, those students would be discounted present and we would not get funding, plus they would run into issues with being out so much. We typically do this for Karnes County and Wilson. We only had one student in the past and that student graduated this past year. So we are not anticipating an agreement with Karnes County. We're just going to have Wilson County this year. Should we have something come up unexpectedly, we can always bring it back to the board for consideration. There's not any question, administration recommends the board approve consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a motion to accept the administration's recommendation?
I'll move to second. Administration's recommendation.
Okay. Next motion, second, Mr. Shawrock. Any further questions or discussion? On favor of accepting administration's recommendation, let me know by raising your hand. Motion carries six to zero. Let me go to Ms. Schröder. Our next item is to consider approval of the 2425 District Improvement Plan by Dr. Wade.
Good evening, Dr. Odom, Dr. Gilstrap, members of the board. Tonight, I will present the goals and performance objectives for our 2024-25 District Improvement Plan, or what we call DIP. In addition to this, you have the full complete plan in your packet, which also lists the strategies for each objective. So during the last school year, 2324, the district leadership team met in February and again in April to develop our comprehensive needs assessment. So we looked at a lot of data, right, for almost a full day. Dr. Gilstrap, don't be frowning, it's a lot of the good data.
A lot of data.
A lot of data. We look at data in relationship to our demographics, processes and programs, student achievement and perception. And then we identify specific strategies to address what we identify as priority needs. And then in May, a draft plan was presented to our District Education Improvement Committee and to our district leadership team. And actually throughout the summer, I've been giving it to them every week to review and to finalize. So tonight, the goals and objectives is only what is going to be presented to the board for approval, but in the District Improvement Plan are strategies. But I have some good news. Are you ready for it? Have you seen this before?
Yes.
All right, our mission, vision, our goals have not changed. We still have the same four goals and we still have the same performance objectives. So nothing is new in regards to that. These are the same goals and performance objectives the board adopted in the strategic plan. But I'm going to highlight some of the strategies for each of those goals. So goal one is excellent student outcomes. Our performance objectives are student safety, well-being, academic growth, innovative and personalized learning, and future ready. So just a few of the strategies to highlight. We are continuing our implementation of Capture Kids Hearts, as you saw some showcase schools today. Dr. Gilstrap met with some teacher, new teachers throughout the year, this past year, and overwhelmingly, they said this training was what was most impactful for them in beginning the school year. So we just completed two full days last year of that training. We're continuing to provide police officers on each campus to promote safety and well-being. Our multi-tier systems of support, we are going to dive into behavior supports and actually develop some training this summer and going to offer again on Thursday about students with behavior issues and how to support that. You saw the information about our math scores and so we are really focusing on math training and pushed teachers attending the math academies training, which is very similar, as Ms. Jones said, to the reading academies, except reading academy is 60 hours, math academy is only a couple of days. But it's still focused on math specifically, and that's for K through five. We are in year two of our learner-centered instructional model, so we are going to continue with that focus on personalization, differentiation. And as I think I've mentioned before, we received a grant to develop an early college high school in terms of future ready. So this is our planning year for implementation in 2526. Goal two is superior workplace environment with performance objectives of continuous learning and support for staff, staff safety and well-being, and staff engagement and satisfaction. Some of the highlights of the strategies here are increased choice for professional learning. On Wednesday, teachers will have the choice of three out of 18 sessions being offered, so a lot of opportunities for them to select, in addition to the two trade days that they have, where they can select something over the summer in exchange for a trade day during the year. We're continuing our focus on professional learning communities and promoting connections between that with our learning experience. PLC time has been built into the school day, and we're going to implement a staff engagement survey. We haven't done that in a couple of years. Goal three is exceptional customer service and community engagement with performance objectives of student engagement and satisfaction, family engagement and satisfaction, and community partnerships. One of the things we're going to offer in addition to the staff engagement survey is a student engagement survey and parent learning sessions, and specifically bilingual community family engagement. We offered a couple of sessions this past year in March and April and had great results from that, and so we're going to launch that even earlier this year. That was a learning opportunity for us of how to meet those needs. Goal four is strategic resource management with performance objectives of strategic and transparent allocation of resources, systematic facility management and planning for growth, systematic operational effectiveness and efficiency, and systematic safety and security processes. Some of the highlights for this goal are increased transparency for instructional resources. This is as a direct result of some legislation about some things that has to be posted on the website about instructional materials. We are going to reconvene our long-range planning committee. There's training for office professionals that has already begun, and security and threat assessment training. So next steps, this is our district improvement plan. The campuses are also going through their campus improvement planning process. So in September, their plans will be presented to the board for approval. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
You said that like, I wrote down about stat, that one goal, you were talking about like secretaries and stuff like that?
Of course.
Incorporating them more to learn.
We're giving them some very specific professional development that they've requested.
Oh, okay. That's a different office.
It's they're more, they're going to do a lot of stuff on customer service, how our software programs work, Skyword, how...
So if a parent comes up, they can give them the proper answer.
Well, that's good. Anything else? All right. Administration recommends the board approve the 2024-25 District Improvement Plan goals and objectives as presented.
Do we have a motion to accept the administration's recommendation?
I'd make a motion to accept the administration's recommendation.
Martinez makes the motion and Ms. Reed makes the, is the second. Any questions or discussion? On favor, let me know by raising your hand. You will oppose? Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, Dr. Wade.
Thank you.
And you will stay in your place.
Okay.
And we will now consider approval of the District Professional Learning Plan.
Yes, sir. The Senate Bill 1267 that was passed a couple legislative, the last legislative session requires the board to approve the District Professional Learning Plan. So in May, our District Education Improvement Committee met and reviewed our plan and recommended its approval. So the State Board for Educators Certification created a clearinghouse of required professional learning. So we are meeting those requirements through an online training program we call Edge Hero, as well as some face-to-face training on campuses. So in your packet is a complete professional learning plan, which we already started this week, and in fact, last week with our new to the profession teachers and new to the district teachers coming in and training, including the Capture Kids Hearts that I just mentioned. Are there any questions about the professional learning plan? If not, the administration recommends the board approve the professional learning plan as presented.
Do we have a motion to accept the administration's recommendation? Mr. Shawrock makes the motion to accept. I'll second it. Mr. Pleer, any further questions or discussion? There are none. You're in favor of the administration's recommendation, let me know by raising your hand. Motion carries six to zero. Next, we will consider approval of contract with EAK for the 2425 Head Start Program. Also, Dr. Wade.
Yes, sir, Dr. Odom. So the contract is for the 2024-25 school year with Innovative Network of Knowledge, or what we call EAK, for Head Start and Pre-K. It is for six classes of three-year-olds.
You asked me what you stood for the other day and I said, I don't have a clue.
Innovative Network of Knowledge.
Yeah, I did ask that question.
Okay. There you go. I got the answer for you.
And the answer, what is it now?
Innovative Network of Knowledge.
Okay.
Formerly called BCIS, so they changed, they changed a couple of years ago. Now they call it EAK.
Okay.
Innovative Network of Knowledge.
I'll try to remember that.
That's all right.
It'll be a test.
So they are assisting in funding six Head Start classes for early childhood with approximately 120 students. For the first time in several years, there are no significant differences in the contract with one great exception. They are increasing the amount of their contribution to a staff member by $1,000. So the total contribution is increased by $12,000 to a total of $288,000. So they're not fully funding those classes, they're just helping to support. Are there any questions about the contract? If not, the administration recommends the board approve the contract with Innovative Network of Knowledge or EAK for the 2024-2025 Head Start Program.
If I know what it is now, I'll make the motion to accept the administration's recommendation.
Thank you.
Do we have a second? I see. Okay, Mr. Pleer, any further questions or discussion? All in favor of accepting the administration's recommendation, let me know by raising your hand. Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wade. We will now consider approval of the 2425 T-Test Appraisers and Evaluation Timeline of Mrs. Stausch.
Hi there again. So it's that time of the year. T-Test is the evaluation and the professional growth tool that the district uses for teachers. So attached and at your seats there is a list of recommended T-Test appraisers. It includes the new assistant principals and the new CTE coordinator. That will be T-Test appraisers, along with the appraisal timeline for the 2024-2025 school year. In addition, according to DNA Local, the board must approve alternate appraisers. They're listed at the bottom. And all of these appraisers have completed their updated T-Test training. They had to pass a test. Are there any questions on the T-Test list of appraisers or the appraisal timeline? So administration recommends the board approve the 2024-2025 T-Test Appraisers Innovation and Evaluation Timeline as presented.
I have a question, I'm sorry. Who would the teaching and learning coordinators, who do they appraise?
So they don't appraise anybody, they're just the alternates. So if a teacher receives an appraisal that they are not happy with, they can request a second appraiser appraisal, and that's where the alternates would come in, only if a second appraiser was requested. So administration recommends the board approve the 2024-2025 T-Test Appraisers and Evaluation Timeline as presented, if there are no further questions.
I move to accept the administration's recommendation.
Ms. Martinez makes the motion to accept it. Ms. Reed secondes it. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor of accepting the administration's recommendation, let me know by raising your hand. Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Now we will consider approval of the inter-local agreement with Wilson County for tax collection. Ms. Angler.
Good evening, Dr. Odom, Dr. Gilstrap, Board of Trustees. This evening, I bring to you an agreement with the county tax assessor collector's office that's been collecting FISD's taxes for many years. The current agreement that we're operating under was executed in 2017 with automatic one-year renewals unless written notice of termination was provided. About a month ago, we got a new agreement from the county tax assessor collector with a few changes, one of them adding a fee of $750 for the county tax assessor collector to calculate our no new tax rate, our no new revenue tax rate, and our voter-approved tax rate. The county tax assessor collector previously calculated this tax rate at no additional cost to the district. The agreement also changes the date by which the district must adopt its tax rate from the previously required date of September 30th to September 22nd of each year. And lastly, the agreement changes the party responsible for establishing the collection rates. Previously, it was the county auditor and now, and then the commissioner's court would approve it. Under the new agreement, it's the tax assessor collector that will be proposing the rates, still being approved by the county commissioner's court, with the timeline of the rate being provided to the district by September 30th of each year, with those rates going into effect the following January 1st. Our tax assessor collector has indicated that the collection rates will be increasing this year as the rates have not changed since 2019. Are there any questions?
Why did they change that one date from the 30th to the 22nd?
I don't know.
Boy, they're awesome.
Maybe just so they can get their notices out quicker.
Okay. I didn't know.
I mean, it's not an issue for us because we always approve them at our board meeting, which is the first, or usually the second Monday because of the holiday falling on the first, but we usually don't have an issue with that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. If there are no further questions, the administration recommends the board approve the inter-local agreement with Wilson County for the collection of taxes as presented.
Do we have a motion to accept the administration's recommendation?
I'll move to accept the administration's recommendation.
Mr. Moots makes the motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Shawrock secondes it. Any further questions or discussion? There are none. You're in favor of accepting the administration's recommendation, let me know by raising your hand. Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Our next item is to consider approval of the DAEP inter-local agreement participating ISDs for the 2425 school year, also by Ms. Angler.
We finally got the last agreement. We've been waiting on Kern City's agreement and we finally got that in July. So this is the same agreement that we've approved with the other ISDs, this one's just Kern City's that we finally got in, approved by their board. So are there any questions on that? If not, then administration recommends the board approve the disciplinary alternative education program inter-local agreement with Kern City ISD for the 2425 school year as presented.
Aye.
Ms. Reed makes the motion to accept the administration's recommendation. Do we have a second? Okay. Mr. Moots, any further questions? All in favor of accepting the administration's recommendation, let me know by raising your hand. Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now consider approval of the 2425 Student Code of Conduct by Mr. Schröder.
Good evening again. Student Code of Conduct sets out the standards of conduct expected of our students. The Student Code of Conduct applies to any student enrolled in FISD. Annually, trustees are required to approve a district student code of conduct that governs our procedures and responsibilities regarding student conduct and discipline processes. This document is provided by Walsh Gallegos, who tracks and reviews all legislation that affects public education, and then incorporates changes necessitated by the final legislation that was passed and signed into law. Our Student Code of Conduct is updated by the in lieu of FISD being solely responsible for changes made during a legislative session or as a result of legal decisions. This past year was a non-legislative year, therefore there were limited revisions. We can expect more the following year. The first revision in our Student Code of Conduct was to address use of AI, artificial intelligence, in student misconduct, including inappropriate messaging in an academic work for school. Under the section titled General Under the section titled General Types of Prohibited Conduct, Failure to Follow Rules, the revision states academic dishonesty, including cheating, copying the work of another, plagiarism, use of AI to complete assignments, or unauthorized collaboration with another person in preparing an assignment. The second revision in the Student Code of Conduct directly prohibits something called Zen pouches and, as well as other, other delivery systems for nicotine, tobacco, and THC. The final revision to this year's Student Code of Conduct was the addition of examples to the list of offenses related to school violence, specifically students hurting and/or threatening others in the school community. All changes made to our Student Code of Conduct mirror the changes to the FISD Student Handbook and board policy. With that said, Board of Trustees, are there any questions pertaining to 2425 Student Code of Conduct?
What was it about the use of AI?
Yeah, it's, it basically, they put it in a new section, General Types of Prohibited Conduct, Failure to Follow Rules, and it's basically academic dishonesty. We have some guidelines there. They just added that verbiage into other things such as cheating, copying work of others, so forth. So they put AI into that section.
AI is, is that?
Yes, ma'am. Good question. So if there are no further questions, administration recommends the board approve the 2425 FISD Student Code of Conduct as presented.
I'll make the motion to accept the administration's recommendation. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Fleer, any further questions? There are none?
How are you all going to verify that, or what are you all using, what are you all using to check the use of AI with student work?
So we actually have a session planned on Thursday where we brought somebody in to do some training with our staff about AI.
Are you all using a system, or?
No.
No?
There's just a couple, there's, there's some ways, there's some, there are some things, I'm trying to think what the high school uses already. They use something to check for plagiarism with AI at the high school, but we're looking at some of the other, some of the other tools.
It's relatively new to school districts, and we'll, we'll make it fit our needs. Yes, ma'am.
All in favor of no further questions, all in favor of accepting the administration's recommendation, let me know by raising your hand. Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, Mr. Schröder.
Yes, sir.
Next, we will consider approval of calling the November 5th, 2024 General School Board Election, single-member districts 1, 4, and 7. Mr. Schröder, also.
Yes, sir, thank you. On November 5, 2024, the trusteeships of Joel Odom, District 1, Steven Shadrock, District 4, and Marshall Fleer, District 7, will expire. In accordance with state laws and local policies, a trustee election is to be held in November of 2024. The district will be holding a joint election with the County of Wilson, which is a requirement for school districts. The district will be contracting with the county elections administrator to conduct the election. I believe there are 11 different common polling places. I think I list in Board Book, I think you have those. There's 12, but one of them isn't a common, I think it's box 102. I'm not, I think, on that, correct?
No.
Any questions? Okay, if there are no questions, administration recommends the board approve the order calling the general election for November 5, 2024 as presented.
I so move.
Right, Ms. Reed makes the motion. Mr. Fleer, you second that, okay. Any further questions? All in favor of accepting administration's recommendation, let me know by raising your hand. Anyone oppose, motion carries six to zero. All right. Now, Mr. Schröder, we will now consider approval of the joint election contract.
Yes, sir. State law requires a school district to hold a joint election with either a city, county, or other local government entity. Therefore, we have agreed to hold a joint election with the county, which was approved by the Secretary of State. In order to meet the requirements for a joint election, the county and the district must have common polling places on election day. You can see that in your board packet. With that said, we've been in a joint election partnership contract with the county for several years. Are there any questions? If there are no questions, administration recommends the board approve the joint election agreement with the County of Wilson as presented.
I move to accept the administration's recommendation.
Okay, Mr. Moots makes the motion, do we have a second? Mr. Shadrock, any further questions? There are none. If you accept the administration's recommendation, let me know by raising your hand. Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
And then, lastly, we will consider acceptance of vehicles from Pecos, Barstow, Toya ISD, and the City of Florisville.
Well said, Dr. Odom. Due to the current state of funding, our plan to add new vehicles to our police fleet has been put on hold. However, Pecos, Barstow, Toya ISD, and the City of Florisville have generously allowed us as a district to continue with our succession plan by offering FISD the opportunity to acquire a 2017 Ford Explorer and a '29 Chevy Tahoe that you possibly saw outside. While these are not brand-new vehicles, they're in relatively good condition, have relatively low mileage, and are equipped with all the necessary emergency equipment. Accepting these vehicles will enable the district to enhance our fleet and meet our operational needs. The vehicles we'll be accepting are listed below, and again, that's the 2017 Ford Explorer from the City of Florisville. It's an interceptor, it's, it's got emergency lights and a canine cage in there, if you saw that, and a 2019 Chevy Tahoe with relatively 25, 26,000 miles with emergency lights. And I believe Chief Keatt has a front, front partition, is that correct? Yes. Any questions on those two vehicles? It's a great deal.
Board members, if you haven't had a chance, we've got a few of those buses that we've taken possession of this year and those police vehicles out back, if you, if you have a chance as you're leaving to go out there and walk through those. Really been blessed with that this year. I believe it's a total of nine vehicles we've acquired this summer. We're going to have to put some money into them to get them, get them where they need to be, but they are roadworthy right now, there's nothing wrong with them. We just need to do some belts and hoses and replace some windows and things like that.
All right, are there any questions to the two vehicles from the city and Pecos? Okay, so administration recommends the board approve the acceptance of vehicles from Pecos, Barstow, Toya ISD, and the City of Florisville as presented.
I'll make the motion to accept.
Second.
Administration's recommendation, Ms. Reed, seconded. Any further questions? All in favor of accepting the administration's recommendation, let me know by raising your hand. Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you, Board of Trustees.
Thank you, Mr. Schröder. We have concluded our agenda for this meeting. Is there any further business? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned at 7:47 PM. Thank you.